All right, I'll make it to order. Roll call, Jessica?
Here.
Rod?
Yes.
Leah?
Here.
Jim?
Yes.
Ethan?
Here.
Carly?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
Also here, we have the proper notes.
Yes.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a volunteer to read the mission statement?
I will. Mount Horeb area school district's partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Jim. Moving on to two, two A is approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Leah, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, moving on to two B, approval of the March 20, 2023 board meeting regular meeting minutes. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Jim, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, moving on to two C, approval of the April 3, 2023 board workshop and executive meeting minutes. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Jim, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, moving on to three, addressing the board, three A is our student spotlight. Dr. Slarnow.
Well, good evening, everyone. I always enjoy good poetry, and let me tell you, we are in for a real treat tonight with Charlotte, our student spotlight recipient. She's going to share a little bit of her poetry, it's just absolutely beautiful, what a gifted writer. But before we do that, may I turn it over to my friend and colleague, Katie Howey, who is our IC principal? Please just watch your step, your friend.
Well, thank you for letting me join you tonight, and thank you to your family for joining us. So Charlotte is a fifth grader in Mr. Boss's class and with Mr. Geisler. She also works with Messida Powell, and she had a chance to participate in the Greater Dane Anthology Contest, and her poem was judged against fifth grade poems across most districts in Dane County and came out with a perfect score. So that's a really cool accomplishment, and I think what you need to know about Charlotte is she is just a fantastic student all the way around. Kind, includes others, respectful, hardworking, does her best in all subject areas, and she is a perfect example of a respectful, responsible, and ready student, and we wanted to recognize her as our student spotlight this month.
Wonderful.
Charlotte, can you come stand by me and read your poem?
Oh, yeah.
And just watch your step, your friend.
All right.
Do I go?
Yes, and nice and loud, so we can, everybody can hear you, okay?
Two one, first stance, first man on the moon, first twelve out of twelve on a spelling test, first woman to vote, first chapter book, first anti-slavery state, you notice some but walk by most. You hear the screams by others for validation, to feel what they're doing has an impact, to think to hope. So one day you can do something, really do something, that will help, that will make the walls around you crumble, so you can walk out to think to hope to matter.
All right. Fifth grade! They're doing some impressive work in that classroom.
It was all Charlotte.
Charlotte, who's with you tonight to celebrate this special occasion?
Mom, my dad, and my grandma.
People who love you a great deal, and of course, we're so grateful to you for being here tonight as well. Can we get a picture of everyone together tonight and share it with the community? Let's do it.
Let's do it.
Let's do that.
You can go into the hallway and remember all of us.
You're kind of excited just to know who you are. This is why it is, do you remember?
Our intermediate center board member is on. Is Mr. Jim.
You really spend time at home, you're just in and out. Mail it.
What have you, please, just watch yourself.
Let me take it, Steve.
Want to do the picture?
No, I'm not the big parent. I'm just a kid, no.
Oh!
It's what?
Do you have plaques for them? Because the new family got them, did you give them?
Good call.
That's what I thought about.
Wait until he's out. Watch out, there's more. It's like that game where you do the rolls and you have to turn the ball.
Can't we just get extensions or something? I mean, we get this every, can't we have a meeting?
Dave, can we put a plug in the middle of the floor?
Hang on, hang on. No. Yes, you can, yes you can, it just costs important about the way to drill a hole through the floor.
Can we have an extension cord?
How about just a battery backup?
Well, you know, that would also help.
Well, it's also the display cord, it's.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's an IT department thing. Cord is an IT department thing?
You see how those two departments work together?
I do that at work all the time.
Yeah, we have the ability to toss work requests back and forth to each other. There's a box you gotta check, this is an IT work request or this is a, you know, maintenance work request.
If I check them both? Can I check them both?
No, you have to pick one or the other, it's not, it's not a. Thank you for your help. Some guy's list of the thirty greatest women musicians.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, this is, this is a beautiful Twitter, right? She's rotten, she's horrible.
Don't worry.
She's got this grand mother from here. You just have to be so proud of your daughter.
She's gonna be the first one to present.
I'm hoping.
So we can all say we knew her.
That's right.
There it is.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to three B. I guess this is departing board member recognition.
We've asked Leah Lipska, a friend of yours on the board, to say a few words on behalf of the board, and we have a little something for you. Leah, can we turn it over to you, please?
Yeah, all right, I'm gonna get through it. Don't worry, there's comedy in here, so I get through it. All right, so Diana started her school board career nine years ago through a board vacancy interview process. I remember thinking, whoa, she is really smart, she would make a great addition to this board, and so she has. Her very first meeting was an expulsion hearing, and nothing can impair you for one of those, but being her first meeting, she handled it like a champ, and she even came back. Over the last nine years, we have had ups, like hiring Dr. Slarnow, and downs, like COVID, and Diana has served as president during many of those peaks and valleys. She has championed math and science, and our talented gifted programming, bringing it to what it is today. If you ever want to hear a story, ask Diana how she feels about everyday math. Speaking of math, Diana loves numbers so much, so here are a few on her career. In nine years, she would have attended over two hundred board meetings. As president, she has presided over approximately seventy meetings. She's attended seven-ish school board conventions, six-ish, we weren't, that one was, I said ish.
Are we counting the virtual COVID ones?
No. And right now, she holds the record for the fastest board meeting at approximately thirty-four minutes. I know it's recorded everywhere. That's hundreds of hours of commitment, so thank you. My favorite thing about Diana is that she's not afraid to call me on my stuff, there was another word, it's not appropriate for school. She is always willing to get me to see things in a different way, even when I think she's wrong. I'm going to miss that. I'm also going to miss my partner in crime school board conventions, so try to get someone to give us a bus. We try every year. We are going to miss Diana's amazing contract and negotiation skills, she's helped us button up money and contract. This board will not be the same without you, we wish you all the best, and hope you enjoy your Monday nights off, but don't be a stranger.
Thank you.
Would you two of you mind standing for a picture? We have a little something, just a small way of saying thank you, and then giving you an opportunity to say anything you might like to share.
I don't think I can get out.
That means we're not letting you out of the board.
Right, am I coming over there? Okay, hold on.
See, I'll see you. Joy, eight board members.
Can't see you. All right, we're getting a picture, like, presenting your diploma. Okay.
Nicely done, Leah, thank you.
Well, thank you, Leah. That was, I did not have anybody prepare a speech for me, but I would like to say thank you to those around the table, thank you for serving. Our community is so lucky, because we have a lot of very community-focused, education-focused, intelligent people that want to serve on this board, we're very lucky. I've been very lucky to serve with several of them, I have a list. This is not an exhaustive list, but including the people in the room tonight, Kimberly Saylor, Danny Michaels, Jeff Hanna, Keith Bachin, Dan Ketterer, Mary Seidel, Peter Strube, I've served with some very, very smart people, and it's just been a pleasure to do the work, I'll miss it. But it'll also be nice to have my Monday nights free for at least a little while. So, thank you to everybody, and thank you to Dr. Slarnow for sharpening our district and making all the improvements that you have over the years.
Thank you for your partnership. Sorry, thanks.
All right. Now we will administer the Board of Education with the office to Jessica and Joel, and who does the administering? That would be our clerk, Leah, this is your night.
It's, it's, oh, like all this public speaking.
Can we usually do that just in the middle here, if that'd be okay, too? Thank you.
You guys can go together.
It's a group ceremony.
Yes, we can go together soon.
Okay, so I think we're supposed to remember our numbers, so, all right. So, repeat after me, I, state your name.
I, Joel Craven.
Having been elected to the office.
Having been elected to the office.
Of the Board of Education of the Mount Horeb area school district.
Of the Board of Education of the Mount Horeb area school district.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, but have not yet.
Not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of.
Set office to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Set office to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
You are sworn in.
Congratulations, Steve.
Moving on to three E, school news. Ethan, I think you've got some stuff.
I do.
Been a few things happening.
Of course, so I have, yeah, so I have boys and girls varsity JV track meets, we have one on Tuesday, April 18th, and one on Friday, April 21st, at Evonine Grove. We have varsity and JV softball versus Oregon on Tuesday, April 18th. We have varsity and JV baseball versus Oregon on Thursday, April 20th, and there's a double header versus Edgewood on Saturday for both teams, so that'll be fun. We have boys JV golf is against Nuclearus on Wednesday and soccer prairie on Thursday. We have our esports team is playing Valorant on Tuesday versus New London High School, and our League of Legends team is playing on Wednesday, April 18th versus Bruce High School, and our early JV soccer team is playing at Dodgeville on Saturday.
Well, and also, just another bit of school news, I mean, the band show was this past weekend, and congratulations to you on a stellar performance.
Thank you.
Very, very, very well done, so thank you for being linked.
Nice to hear.
It's great. Dr. Slarnow, school news?
Well, it's not just our high school students with their music talents, our kindergarten students will have their sing this Friday afternoon at two o'clock, we always enjoy hearing those little voices, and then word has it, on May 6th, we've got prom. Yes. Be here before, you know, it signifies people starting to think the end of the school year is around the corner, but we still have lots to learn and lots to do, so it'll be a great, great close to the year. Thank you, Ethan, for representing the very best of Mount Horeb High School. Ethan, by the way, gave a tour to Senator Hesselbach and Chief Representative Baer on Thursday, that was just, we can do just a wonderful job.
I should also mention that on Wednesday, we're bringing in the Wisconsin DPI, and Dr. Underlee are coming to our school to have a mock joint finance committee session at our high school.
Really? Great. Other school news?
On April 6th, Dr. Slarnow and I met with Mr. Christensen and a group of high school students, there was six students, I think, there was two sixths, two sevens, two eights. They were so well articulated and thoughtful, it was fantastic. It was first thing in the morning, you never know what you're gonna get, but they were, they had lots to say, and they were, they were great. We started the conversation talking about school safety, they all said that they felt safe, and they didn't have any concerns. Then we asked if they had any things that they wished the adults around them would address, any concerns or challenges, there's a lot of talk about lunch lines and lunch line behavior, which was clearly something they were passionate about, and it was very interesting. And then they listed off a whole big long list of things that they were really proud of, they liked their math options, the music programs, the clubs, the sports, the language classes, they had far more to say about what they were proud of and what they liked about my school than they're concerned about the lunch line. And Dr. Slarnow very thoughtfully closed it by asking them to identify a staff member that they, you know, had built a connection with, someone that they respected and admired, and they each shared someone from Mr. Buddy to the school owners, to many of our classroom teachers, and it was, it was a really good visit, I thought.
Thank you for.
Audience members, give us school news. Sure. We have a job fair tomorrow at the high school, that we're really excited about. We have thirty-one local employers who are gonna be at the high school, is it the cafeteria it's called?
Yeah.
Yep, and it's from two to six, and from two to four, it's focused on students, and so the employers will be meeting with the students, and we actually have a guest from the Department of Workforce Development giving a presentation to the employers about working with teens, and then to the students as well, so that they know their rights and things like that, and then it will open up to the community at four.
Wow, very neat.
Yeah, thanks for reading it, it's exciting. Thanks.
Other school names?
I have a quick one. Last week, Wednesday, I had a chance to go up to the Dells and testify in front of the joint finance committee, and I got up at a just awful hour of the morning to get there in line, and I'm so glad that I did, because I got, I walked into the building at six-thirty, and I was not the first person, there was already like ten people ahead of me, so luckily I had my computer, I just sit down and do some work. You get two minutes, and it's hard to figure out how to make your point effectively in just two minutes, and so I ended up, I ended up, I talked about the same kinds of things we talked about during the WASB day at the legislature, and then I really tried to illustrate what I saw at the PC in terms of the paraprofessionals and how they're able to work with students and, and those pay rates, to just try to illustrate the impact that the budget has on their school. So, it sounds like from what I heard, that the legislators are hearing similar messages, they're getting the word, so hopefully, Marika?
In your time there, did you, were there other school board members there, other districts?
There were, because I was early, then I didn't get to hear, I didn't sit around to hear a lot. I think I heard that there were maybe fifteen, like twelve or fifteen, that day in the Dells, and there could have been more, they had had a hearing, I think, a quarter, a little more, or there had been.
School board members? That's great.
And if you don't mind, in honor of all this great news and all of the celebratory action, our new school board members, Charlotte, of course you, there's some treats here, and I'd love it if everybody wouldn't mind just helping themselves, there's some fruit, and there's also some cookies, too, so if you wanna be good, or you wanna be, please enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to three E, citizens' comments.
I did not see.
Moving on to four, personal transactions.
Board members, there is a addendum to tonight's.
Motion to approve personal transactions, include any number?
Second.
Motion carries, moving on to five, our consent agendas, is there anything anybody would like to pull out? Not a little clean emotion, through group the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second half.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Anna. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, moving on to six, discussion rooms. Six A is our community member reports, and we will start with community and legislative engagement, and Leah, it is your night.
And Leah, it's my night, for public speaking. All right, so we met on the twenty-first of March, we talked about the joint meeting, which was just held on April 12th with the village and the district, we talked about Ethan giving a tour to our representatives, which happened also last week, and we talked about Dead Capital, which also happened last week. We had four letters on our agenda, but we had to cut our meeting short due to events going on, so we were able to cover one, which is the one that we looked at at our, at our workshop, the other three little letters, when Adam and I finished our homework, will show up on the agenda in the future here after we review them at the next meeting, and our next meeting is the twenty-fourth, at five-thirty.
Thanks, Leah. Board members, any questions for Leah? All right, moving on to six B, information and advocacy report, percent seniors meeting college board recommendations for course study. We have Sarah Strucker coming to help us through this one.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Eve. Okay, get to my spot here, I'm gonna be talking mostly about the graphs. This report is more information and not as much advocacy maybe as other reports, but it's just a way to keep you informed as to how our graduates are doing as we, as they leave Mount Horeb and they go on to some type of post-secondary education. So the first graph, I'll, on page one, thanks.
Graph, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, first ta, first figure, table, image, display?
Agreed, I'm just.
I'm sorry, it's my fault, you were, you listened to me, I didn't speak right. Usual, right? So, table one walks us through the percent of students who are in need of math remediation who go to a UW systems school. So we see our percentage there, nineteen percent, that, they'd be like, wow, that, that seems high, and it is high, but it's been status quo for Mount Horeb since 2016. I included, just in the paragraph above, a link to all of the schools within the state, so you can really see, if you click on it, how we really are comparing with schools in the state. Once you look at that, you're like, oh, we're not doing as bad as some other school districts, so that is good to see, but we're still not where we wanna be within Mount Horeb. So I've connected with some of our math teachers to schedule some time over the summer to dig into this data. Hopefully, we'll be able to dig into which students are identified in this UW systems report, and look at their ACT data, their, their high school course sequencing, what kind of grades they were getting, just to try and paint a picture and put together where is the disconnect that we have sixteen to twenty percent of our students needing to take a math remediation course in college, because those don't really count when you go into college, right? You have to pass those to really get into the courses you wanna get into. So, we're gonna do some digging into that, hopefully, we'll be able to pull, like I said, individual students to paint that picture, and then the next reporter, at some point, I can bring that information back to you all. The next section then also looks at students who maybe aren't as prepared, according to the Madison College system, so looking at that two-year system. We have the typical tables we've had in the past, looking at math, English, reading, and writing, and looking at, in two ways. So where it says prepared all, that's all the students entering Madison College, or at that time in Madison College, and then the Mount Horeb version is right below it in that, thank you, Steve, in that row. So you can gaze through there, over, over the past five years, but I keep moving the dates over, but ever since I've been writing these reports for the past about seven years or so, eight years or so, Mount Horeb has been higher than the Madison College average of those students within typically Dane County, our, our area going to Madison College for their education.
Is this similar, that these are the students who have to take some sort of remedial math or English class, that's how they figure out preparedness?
Yes, yes. The entrance exam, yeah, yep.
So there's this fall of those years, is that what the timing is?
Or is that the class of?
Class of.
Class of, yeah.
Next piece is a piece that we've had before, but I, I use more graphs this time to paint a broader picture, so typically, I have shared with the board this.
That is a graph.
Graph. Figure, looking at public versus pri, actually, no, I've shared the one below it, which you don't have to go to yet, Steve, it's okay, but typically, I share with you all a two-year versus four-year look. This time, I wanted to share with you by institution type, which is public versus private, institution level, which is the four-year and two-year, which is figure two, and then institution location, in-state versus out-of-state, just so you can see more of a complete picture of where students are going, and how that is or is not fluctuating over time. So we can see here, we do have a large number of our students attending public institutions in figure two, then. We can see then that two-year versus four-year, what we've seen in the past. We, we have seen, since the class of 2018 in general, a dip, that purple line, a dip in students who are enrolling in college. That might not be a bad thing, though, once we think about opportunities that kids may have with, with apprenticeships, joining the workforce, those kinds of things, so that's something I'd like to tap our counselors and learn more, I think, anecdotally, as, they've been seeing some trends of where students are going now, because it's okay if not all kids wanna go to college, right? We wanna make sure we have the best fit for them, because in the last piece of data, we'll get to in a little bit, we talk about students graduating in six years, we wanna make sure, we don't want kids just to go to college, go to college, right? So, we want them to find their path and be successful.
That was one of my questions that I had, is do we don't keep track of students who, you know, have apprenticeships or?
I don't have that data, but our school counselors do a pretty good job of that, I don't know where they house it, so that's something I'm gonna do some work on next. Yeah. Good question. And then we have by, by location, we can see many students attending in-state institutions as well. The next area, or the next graph we look at then is that persistence piece, students who go from freshman year to sophomore year, they persist and they continue on. Again, by institution type, level, and location. We can see here, whether it's public or private, the persistence is relatively the same, so that was an interesting piece. In figure five, looking at institution level, four-year versus two-year, it's interesting that the two-year goes up, down, up, down, up, down, I'm not quite sure why, but something that perks your interest, and then the last piece is by location as well, and we can see, actually, out-of-state, interestingly has, seems to have higher persistence often on. A newly added piece then, that we haven't had in the past, is the time to college graduation. interestingly has, seems to have higher persistence off and on. A newly added piece then, that we haven't had in the past, is the time to college graduation. So you can see this bar graph, each color represents whether they graduate in two, three, four, or five or six years. We can see, if we think of 2010 to 2016, even think 2016, well, if we think of the class of 2016, you had six years on, that's 2022. So this is many classes ago, how they're graduating. And over time, we do see an increase, and we also see an increase actually in most students graduating in four years, that orange bar graph. But again, if we look at the overall percentage, let's say the class of 2016 is about 56, 57% graduating in six years. Doing some digging in the National Center for Education Statistics, you know, looking at more at 64% we want. So that's another piece I'd like to talk with our school counselors about, making sure we have the right fit for kids and how we're doing with our academic and career planning pieces, and are there ways that we can improve or learn from others? That's all I have. Any questions? Leah?
So one thing that I think might affect some of our 2022 kids, having had a 2022 kid, is that they were basically told the ACTs aren't going to be used to get you into college. What I don't know that they were told is that was, is what was going to be used to place them.
Okay.
So you had some kids who took it because they had to, but they had tried so hard, so they're like, yeah, it's not gonna-
It's a rough couple of years.
Yeah. And they're not gonna use it to get me into college, so what do I care? But then they use those numbers to place them.
Okay.
So I think we have some kids that are in remedial math that in no way should have ever been put in remedial math.
Gotcha. That's good to know.
Yeah. And remedial math is crazy. I've seen screenshots.
Yeah, it's not where we want our kids to be.
No. Five plus two is not a college-level math class.
Yeah.
These are the screenshots I get.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that, I'd be really interested when you started picking out those kids-
If we can, yeah.
-looking at their grades and now seeing that they're in remedial math.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And seeing how far they went in the math sequencing as well, to see if they got through algebra two or pre-cut, like, look at that. Yep.
And see if they took a math their senior year.
We got a wish list going here, okay.
I'd say it'd be interesting. And I wonder if we're gonna see longer times to graduation as we get into the COVID, more COVID impact, and you know, those kids that graduated in 2020, or-
A lot of kids took a year off, though, so, a larger amount than usual.
That's true.
So, yeah, we'll see there. Yeah.
Other questions, board members?
I've had a question, that do the years of graduation correlate with any degree in particular, or are they kind of like different for each student case?
That's a good question. I do not have that data from this report, but that would be interesting to see if a student shows career X, or career pathway X, Y, or Z, which one is holding on to them. Is that what you're saying, Ethan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have data about graduate degrees? Where do we stop in undergrad?
I have never seen that in the National Clearinghouse report. I would think that would be too hard for them to take, the students, after they-
Right.
-move on, take a year off, or go somewhere else.
Yeah.
Too far away.
I appreciate your emphasis on the making sure kids finish, because if you look at all the stats on, it's where people get into financial trouble, investing all that money and not making it through and getting the degree.
Yep, definitely. Thank you.
Great job, Sarah. Thank you. Alright, moving on to six C information advocacy report, annual capital improvement and maintenance report. We have Mr. DeHugue and Mr. Reed come on in and talk to us about this report.
Well, good evening, everyone. A number of years ago, you may recall, the Board of Education would spend an opportunity in April, like we are right now, talking about a couple of different documents. The BGT Committee years ago, when we started this process, spent the months of February and March reviewing these documents and having pretty in-depth conversation. And then it went to the Board in April, and it seemed in that first year that it worked out pretty well in terms of timing and budgeting and so forth. And so we've carried that torch, and for many years down the road now, it's hard to believe, where we've been able to continue this process and button up some things along the way that we wanted to improve on. So certainly, I'm the one that started off doing some talking in this presentation, but the reality is Dave Reed's the one that puts forth a lot of effort in terms of organizing his thoughts and so forth, so we'll turn it over to him in a second. One, the last thing I just want to mention is, this is an opportunity for us to not only assess where we currently are, but then it also allows Dave an opportunity when he works on his budget, and that budget, by the way, was presented at the BGT Committee not that long ago, but it gives him an opportunity to organize how he wants to allocate dollars to do a variety of improvements in our district, so, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. As Scott said, you know, this, this report card, if you will, was generated a few years back, and it seemed like the right way for me to communicate to you guys about the condition of certain criteria, and certainly there's more criteria to each one of our facilities, but these are the, these are the ones that seem to make the most sense to us, and give that a letter grade, and, you know, and track that over time. And you can see, in every one of those where we've improved, if, when the grade's gone up, you know, we've had our, some sort of major contribution to that, that particular item, you know, whether we renovated the high school, or put a new roof on the IC, or what have you. That's generally where those big things make big improvements, and then some of that stuff actually is things that I can tackle out of my operating budget each year. So as Scott alluded to, you know, I take a look at the report card and say, well, where can I, where can I put some money on these things to kind of bring up the grade, so to speak? So, and this is the, this is the report card, as it were, for this year. At the ELC, we are still, you know, we haven't put any real effort into that, because we're not really quite sure where the future of that building is, so, again, we do things that are just as needed, right? Just to keep the ship floating and headed in the right direction. The PC, you know, in 2012, when that was completely renovated, that got, went from probably Fs across the board to As across the board, and so on. PC, what I'm gonna do is highlight some of the changes for this year. PC definitely needs some repairs in the playground area. Again, I'm really hesitant to go too far, because I'm not quite sure where, you know, what the future of that area is, so try to do as much as I can to keep it safe for the kids and stuff like that, so some of that work will be done this summer, I can fit that into my budget. IC, we've improved at the IC, we did some repairs over the gym area in the last year to fix up that, so we're in pretty good shape across the board, except for the D grade in our HVAC, which is the controls, and I think we've talked about that at a number, at least at BGT. You know, the control system that regulates the temperatures and things like that is not supported anymore, and we're gonna need to move forward with getting that replaced as well. Pretty much status quo through some of the rest of the buildings. I think if you go down to the district office, we, I had to downgrade our parking lot, that thing continues to deteriorate, we're gonna look at getting that replaced over the summer as well out of my operating budget, so. And then we got an upgrade in our track, we had some repairs done last year, hopefully gonna get some paint, some lines done this year. One of my, I've said this before, and I hope it doesn't come across as an excuse, but it is so hard to find contractors to do work these days. I was very fortunate to find somebody that had some time in their schedule here, you know, pretty soon to come and do the track. I said, well, jeez, I'd really like to do it, you know, later, and they're like, if you don't do it, if you don't do it now, we'll see you next year. That's how, that's how tight things are at, so. That's a parent-teacher conference on the, on the condition of the buildings. Any questions? You need to read to your child more at night, do math with them, and fix their parking lot.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Dave, I think this is, I know that it is outside of your budget, but because playgrounds are listed for the PC, I just wonder, generally for the PC and the IC, the playground equipment itself, like, this seems like you're addressing like the pavement, but at what point do we assess the playground equipment? Not only is it still safe and-
Right.
-well-maintained, but also, you know, we got this letter, I don't know however many months ago, from the middle school student, well, a middle school student about making sure that our playground equipment is accessible and inclusive. I know we have swings, but what other things? So again, I know this isn't part of your budget, I guess I'm just asking the big picture, like, at what point do we look at our playground equipment and consider that?
That's a great question. You know, obviously, there are some safety factors that we, we go through our playground equipment once a year, just to make sure things is in good shape, and we replace nuts and bolts and chains and things like that. There is a life cycle, that's kind of a standard life cycle for, well, all this stuff. I mean, most of these things where it says, you know, expected life, I didn't come up with that, that's, that's a accessible, you know, information on the internet that you say, okay, you know, doors and windows last 50 years, you know, before you have to replace them again. Playground equipment, I don't believe is part of this, that again, it wasn't, it's not everything. You're right, we do need to start looking at some of those things. The PC comes to mind, that one, that, I think that was installed, I'm not gonna say, I have some data on when it was installed, it's getting long in the tooth for sure. And we replace parts as we can and things like that, but at some point, you're right, we're gonna have to bulldoze it and start over. I don't know that we're there yet, but we're getting real close, so, yeah, I mean, that could be another thing that we could, we could analyze, you know? At some point, we'll have to get it into the budget to either replace the plastic parts, fix things, or just, you know, start over from scratch. Yeah, the PC, the PC playground gets a ton of use-
Oh gosh, yeah, I live over there. I mean, school day, not school day, there's kids all done. I mean, that's where my kids spend all their money. Yeah, I mean, I just know that if we do pursue, you know, addressing those buildings, the playground also will need to be addressed, and if we have some data to say, yes, we do need to address this, that would be good to have.
Now, as far as inclusiveness, I kind of, I kind of rely on Brian and his team to say, you know, we really could use a this or a that, or, you know, and, yeah, we, in fact, we've been talking back and forth about a special kind of swing, and, yeah, so I, I'm sensitive to it, but I don't know what the right thing, you know, for each particular child could benefit from, so.
Thank you.
The Intermediate Center has a little bit of new inclusive materials for kids. We worked with a group of students who are getting their bachelor's degree in special education at Platteville, and they created a wonderful activity for kids outdoors there, thanks to a partnership with the Intermediate Center. So we can be doing more, to be sure, but you're right, I do think any part of the solution that we recommend to the community around the ELC, PC should include something related to the rec side.
I agree.
Do we want to talk about this next one here, the one to four Eers?
So one of the opportunities that we've had this past year with the passing of the referendum is an opportunity for Dave and his department to increase his project budget by $100,000. So for a number of years, his project budget was at $130,000, and we were able to increase that now to $230,000, which is really exciting for obviously a variety of reasons. And you'll see here, this is an opportunity, and again, Dave, all the credit goes to Dave here, but it's an opportunity for him himself, but also his team, to be able to review all the needs in the district and then talk about, okay, what are things that are feasible that can be accomplished within the terms of his operating budget versus something that's so significant, let's say a building roof, that it would be almost impossible to be able to do something out of an operating budget, short of setting $50,000, $75,000, $100,000 aside each and every year for a variety of years until you eventually get to the mark of, of being able to do replacements. So this is within Dave's operating budget, his project budget, and again, it increased from $130,000 to $230,000. So I'd like you to take over the details.
Thanks. Yeah, the, it's very exciting to have that extra amount of cash to do the work. Sometimes, sometimes I kind of remember my daughters growing up coming to me and saying, Dad, I really could use a new set of goalie gloves, and then the one was, and you have, they all have legitimate needs, right? And you have, you only have so much money, and you have to kind of spread that around. And the principals and coaches and you name it, they all have legitimate, boy, it should be nice to have a this, and that's, that's where the list on the left kind of comes from, is like, people say, boy, I'd really like to have this, or, and it's stuff that my guys will tell me, you know, we really need to fix this, or we really should look into, you know, upgrading that. So I create this long list of wants, and we try to, you know, attach some ballpark numbers, some of these things we know, other things we kind of take a stab at as far as cost goes, and then it's about trying to prioritize those and trying to fit those into that $230,000 spending limit, right? So this year's parade of hits, I guess, or this year's tasks this summer are listed in the 2324 column, and subject to change, whether I could get contractors or something else would come up, but this would be, this would be my goal, is to accomplish all of the things in the 2023 column. You know, at the Early Learning Center, really the only thing I really want to accomplish is to get some roof leaks repaired. We have a couple of roof leaks that, you know, I just want to throw some money at that so that we don't have water dripping in the lunchroom. At the Primary Center, I've got some fire panel repairs that I need to address. The asphalt around doors four and five has settled, making it almost impossible to roll things in and out of the doors. Kids trip on it, so we'll get that fixed up this, this summer. The asphalt itself really could use to be seal-coated and restriped. We find, we find that it helps cut down on the amount of salt we have to put on that, on that surface. When it's white or gray like it is, it doesn't melt anything. When it's, when it's fresh and black and seal-coated, that stuff melts right off, so it is, it is like, wow, we really should just throw that on there every year. So about $40,000 worth of total spending at the, at the Primary Center. Intermediate Center, one of the things that Principal Huggie's been asking me for, for a number of years, are some sound panels. If you've ever had lunch at the IC, we need to put some signs out that said hearing protection required. Anyway, so we, it's like, okay, we're gonna try something here, so there's not like some sort of book you go to that says, if I've got an Intermediate Center lunchroom, what kind of sound panel should I get? So we've got some, we, and then, yeah, we're, how to put them up there, I've got a team, my team has figured out a way to get them mounted, so we'll get them ordered and we'll try it out, right? There's no guarantee, it's got a metal roof and a concrete floor, not the best for acoustics. So we're gonna give them a try there. We're gonna upgrade the gym and cafeteria and the library to LED lighting. If you've been in our high school or middle school gyms, they've got the new UFOs, they're called UFOs, little round lights that are really nice and bright and look modern, so we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, fix up the gym and put some new LED lighting in those areas. More seal coating and striping of areas. The retaining walls, one of the first things that Scott told me to do when I took this job, he says, get rid of the, get rid of the retaining walls on the front of the IC, remember?
And you remember why I said that?
They're ugly.
Well, and the amount of water and ice-
Oh, yeah, yeah, they were just-
It was a safety hazard.
Anybody got like a retaining wall at their house that was built in the 90s? Whatever they made those bricks out of, I just think it's like just one step harder than shirt. They all just deteriorate, they're horrible. So this is the last of those 2,000 retaining walls that we're just gonna get rid of, because the kids are out there tripping over them, and it's just awful. So we'll get that fixed up, we need some new fans in the gym. So about $50,000, $49,000 worth of expenditures at the Intermediate Center. Moving on to the middle school, Principal Christensen has been very patient with me. He's always wanted a sidewalk that would connect the, basically the seventh grade and, you know, the three arms, you know, the seventh grade to the bus loop, right? The kids will walk out there and stomp through the snow and stomp through the mud this time of year, he was like, can we just get a sidewalk in there? So we'll get that sidewalk put in there for them this year. Let me add here, oh, yeah, oh, and then he's, he's been very patient about having his gym painted. So we're gonna get, we're gonna get the, the middle school gym painted this summer, and then the play area needs to be restripped, so a total of $56,500 of- So, a total of fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars of expenditure at that particular building. Question?
Where does the sidewalk go?
I have a side, I have, I have, I have a picture in, in some slides coming up. Yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll be clear. Yeah, my, my description was, was horrible.
I'm like, isn't this a park, but I don't know what I'm thinking, so.
Yeah, it, it actually goes right through the park. I, I, but I, I asked the, I asked the village if it was okay. At the high school, new overhead equipment in the main gym. With some help from the basketball group, we were able to fund all new overhead baskets at the, at the high school. The equipment that's in there is original to the building, so nineteen sixty. The, the, you know, it used, it used to have the cranks on the wall to bring it up, but, but the structure itself is still from nineteen sixty. So, yeah, it's long since, you know, been needed to be replaced. So, yeah, we're gonna get that done this summer. The aux gym, we're gonna get new LED lighting in there. I hope to see a pretty significant reduction in operating costs. Those lights seem to be on all the time. The, the main gym and aux gym and middle school gym, those, they're, they're always, you know, we've, we've talked about that work. They're always scheduled for, you know, one event or another, so. And also, cut down in, a reduction in, in maintenance. The fixtures that are up there are constantly needing ballast and bulbs and stuff like that, and they're, they're difficult to, to actually get at. The divider curtain between the, in the, between the two courts and the aux gym, if you've seen that unfurled, it's pretty ugly. Colleen Nessheim has been very patient with waiting for me to get that fixed, so this is gonna get done this summer. So, that aux gym will look a lot better come August. AC for the custodial office, that was maybe an oversight of mine when we were, when we were building the building. We were gonna use that room only for storage, so we didn't need air conditioning. Well, they got turned into the main office, and it's hot in there, so we're gonna throw some air conditioning in there for my guys to, to cool off with. So, about sixty-two thousand dollars total at the high school. Athletic fields, we're gonna paint the track. I've got, I've, the upper shed is always gonna be closed in and insulated in some areas, so my guys can keep equipment in there over the winter time, so we're gonna spend a little money on getting that thing taken care of as well. So, twenty-one thousand dollars in the athletic fields and, and those kinds of things all adds up to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of projects this year. Now, the, the beauty of this is, is that that's, that's really two years' worth of effort. Now that I've got two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's really two years' worth of, of stuff that gets done this year. So, I'm very pleased, and then I can do two years' worth of stuff next year, and, you know, it's just, it's, it's great. So, thank, you know, thank you for championing the, the cause of that referendum and, and sending some money in this way, so it's good. Questions on this?
One, one question for you, you brought up the cost savings, efficiency on the LED bulbs, and I just gotta think a little bit. I can pull in school news at the same time that I just before. Was it the CCS preschool gala thing in Chauvesy's the other night, four K school? And they have automatic lights in there, it's all LED, everything like that. What's, where's our district at, you know, as a whole, in, in terms of potential energy savings on other conversions like this?
We are on a mission.
All that kind of good stuff.
Yeah, we are, we are on a mission to, you know, get all LED. You know, I, looking back in, in time, the aux gym had those big, you know, those big metal halide things when it was built, and then they put those, what, those high bases, six bulb fluorescents in there. I can remember them doing that when I was, I was still teaching here. And now LED is the thing, and prices have come down on those fixtures, there's rebates and things like that. To your question of automation, the IC is fully automated, all the lights are timed. We can turn them on and off. The high school, the new part is all occupancy sensed, so you can walk through. The PC has that as well, in the rooms, in the halls, there, so they're not, bulbs aren't burning all the time. That comes at a bit of a price, you know, if you sit at your desk and don't move for a while, the lights will flick off, right? That kind of wakes some of my staff members out, so we've, we've kind of, just, we've kind of get done away with that function, and they actually have to turn the lights on and off. But for the most part, the high school is occupancy, we, we've kind of not done the, let's, let's turn them all on, turn them all, all off at once. It's, you know, let's just turn on whatever anybody's in, and that's not it. Obviously, the gyms and stuff like that, you, you turn those guys on and then turn them off, so. We are, we continue to, you know, work through that. When we did the renovations at the high school, we purposely, you know, did all the hallways in LED. We may not have gotten through all the classrooms, but, you know, that's, you know, all the, all the new parts of the high school, all the stuff that was touched in renovation, all got new LED lighting. All the exterior lighting is LED, so all the wall packs and, and pole lights and things like that are all LED as well. So, again, I, it's hard to put a finger on, on how much that cost savings is. I mean, the, the, the people who sell you the lights will tell you, you know, you should see this percentage. For me, it's about maintenance. We were constantly up and down the poles replacing those metal halide bulbs, and they were expensive, and now the, the fixtures last a long, long time. That's not to say they don't fail, but they last a lot longer than anything we currently have. So, and then, you know, what you see in the next three years are kind of my, well, this is what I want to do this year, this is what I'd like to do next year, and, and so forth. And obviously, that gets cloudier the farther you look out, right? And we look into the, these longer range projections, like years five through nine, and then the, the final one. These are kind of like, well, I know the roof's good for so many years. You know, when am I gonna have to replace this roof again? Or the seal coating on the driveway is good for this many years, when am I gonna have to do that? So, there's a, a, a number of those kinds of things. When am I gonna have to really grind down the, the gym floor and start over again? You know, so those kinds of things, so I, I projected those things out, you know, as far into the future, you know, fifteen years. It's very cloudy, right? We all, we all understand that you, you take your best guess, and, and what's, what's interesting is that when you total it up, that at the bottom, it's way more than my two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in a lot of cases. If you go into the, the next group, they get up to be, like, when we start talking about roofs and things like that, we're talking, you know, four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, that kind of thing. So, those are referendum level, you know, expenditures. You know, so, and again, this, this just, this just addresses what I think are the maintenance needs for the district. Nothing about, you know, suitability or capacity or anything like that. Just, we keep things status quo as it is, to keep them up and running. Questions?
Before we let you off the hook, Dave, I just wanna make a comment that the softball lights were turned on for the first time this past week.
Sweet.
They look phenomenal, so.
I can do it from my phone.
It's been a wonder going through the last number of years.
Yeah, it's, I, I am, I am thrilled, I, I, I just like, when they, when they turned on the other night, when we were having our community thing, it was like, God, God, that is absolutely the coolest thing. And Musco will be out shortly to give me a, a price on what it takes to upgrade some of the other facilities. Hold on to your hats. No, I think, I think, you know, for me, I, I would love to do the, the soccer lights because those are the ones that are used the most. Twenty-some games, spring and fall. Football, we have, what, seven games? You know, one, one a week for seven weeks in the fall, so that may not be the, the one you go after first, but soccer for sure. Oh, yeah, there's the, there's the soccer lights. My guy, my, one of my guys was coming uptown, and he said he couldn't tell the lights were on till he turned the corner by the high school. There's no halo. If you've ever been like over to Verona on a Friday night, when they're playing football, you can't tell that they're there until you get right up on the field. There's, there's no light pollution, so.
But ours, you can see when you're coming into town, you're like, oh, it's Friday, oh, it's football game.
Yeah, well, that's the, the thing, yes, it's, it's, those old metal halide lights are, you know, first of all, they take ten minutes to warm up and actually get to full strength, where those LEDs come right on. Yep, and, and again, that, that was a partnership with the village and the softball club, you know. We, we really could do great things when we, when we, you know, get together with other entities. The softball club has been just phenomenal driving that, that facility forward, and I'm more than happy to help them keep going. Good stuff.
I have a, I have a question. So, in years one to four, you have deferred a hundred and ninety thousand for the district office slash bus garage, but it doesn't show up anywhere in five-nine or ten-fourteen.
Yep.
We're just ignoring in continuity.
Yeah, we don't know what the long-term answer is on the, on the district office. When we did this document, we, we worked with BGT in February and March, and it was before the board approved its budget earlier this month. So, we had that as off on the side because we didn't know the direction of the budget, and then certainly, long-term, just not sure beyond the first year now, where we go with it, yeah.
So, yeah, we, you know, when, when this document was created, we, we knew we needed, and we kind of had this notion it was gonna cost about this much, but we hadn't presented it to you, like, is this how you want to go, is this, is this something you want to do? So, now that we've kind of crossed that bridge, that, that two hundred and thirty thousand dollars is still what is, is in my line item, but we have funds available to cover the extra money that will, will go into fixing up the deal.
Okay, and then you mentioned a picture that showed with that.
Yeah. Right, absolutely, so it, it, those, those projects, again, there's the ELC roof leak. It, it's, leaks are, leaks are the bane of my existence, they show up at the strangest time. We can have a pouring rain and not a drip, and we can have fog, and I think it'll be drizzling like, like. But we, I, I've got a, I've got an expert coming to have a look at that and put some flex seal on it. There's the sound panels, that's where we're good, that's where we intend to put them. That, that arrow pointing up is, is a, there's a sound panel on each side of the bar joist there. We're hopeful that that's gonna help reduce the amount of bounce in that room. You can see it's got sound panels on the wall already, but there's not nearly enough. That thing needs to be carpeted and, you know, shag on the ceiling to deaden some of that noise down. Then, there's, there's the, the, the doors at the PC where the, the asphalt has settled, and that's a trip hazard, and, you know, my guys have a, a real tough time getting stuff in and out of that building. PC playground, again, you know, it's getting long in the tooth, we'll get the cracks filled, and we'll get it sealed coated, just like your driveway at home, and then, and restriped. There's the fire panel, maybe you can see it, but, you know, like, it's very pixelated, you really can't read it very well. It's still functioning, it still, it still does exactly what it's supposed to do. It's really difficult to tell you, to understand what it's telling you when there's a fault. We'll get that replaced. Library lighting, we'll just get that all re-switched over to LED. You can see, you can see, there's, there's a bunch missing, and then again, one of my pet peeves is when they mix the different color bulbs in the, in the same fixture. You got blue ones and red ones together, it's like, oh, come on. So, anyway, we'll, we'll get, we'll get all LED in there. There's the IC, those, those, bless you, those, those square high bases will get replaced with the round UFO style. Again, much longer life, much longer life and, and reduced cost. Ceiling fans, evidently, they squeak terrible. Again, there's patience from my guys, right? It's like, ah, yeah, I'd love to do that, but I just never, you know, so that's your, we're gonna get some new ceiling fans put in there. IC playgrounds need some love, again, seal coat, crack fill, a couple potholes out there that need to be filled in. You know, that, that's gonna be, that's gonna need to be completely taken out, replaced, probably five years from now. So, that'll, that'll appear on, on the list at some point. There's our infamous retaining walls, we'll get rid of those and then put some grass back there so kids have more room to play.
Is there just gonna be like a slope or anything there?
Yep, it's gonna be a slope, yeah, yeah, there's not much you can do there. We, we've, we've got, we've, I'm left, I'm left to deal with some decisions my, my predecessors made. You know, and it's like, okay, how do I, how do I do something with that against the wall there? So, we'll, we'll figure that out. And then the next light is, that's where the sidewalk's gonna go. So, that, where it joins to the left there is the seventh grade wing. It's gonna go past the, you know, the batting cages for softball, behind the scoreboard, there's a, there's a pole light there now too. And then it's gonna connect over to the, the pad behind the JV softball diamond. And we'll plow that in the winter time so that the kids can make that journey through their, you know, on a paved surface, so. Yeah, that, that was, that was, that's been a request for, from Mr. Christiansen for quite some time.
And they walk it anyways in the winter time, you know, even without the parking or the sidewalk.
Well, we had, we had to put a gate on the softball diamond because they would cut through the softball diamond, you know, to get to, so, well. Yeah, this, they, they get, Mr. Christiansen has, has requested this, I'm like, yep, Paul, I can do this for you, that's easy. And that's where the sidewalk, you know, basically goes, you know, you can see the new pole there on the right. So, it'll, it'll cut through there and go over to the JV softball diamond and then onto the bus lane.
Looks nice without sound.
Yeah. Mowed on Friday, plowed on Monday, loved it. Middle school gym paint, it's got the, it's got the nineteen ninety-three browns, and, and Mr. Christiansen has said, I'm, I'm done with this, and that's not Viking red, so we're gonna get in Viking red, and we're gonna stick with the, the new color scheme, the grays, if you will. So, that'll get the, and it needs, it's, it's, it's in need of, yeah, everything above the red line hasn't been painted since nineteen ninety-three. But we'll get that done. Middle school playground, the, the asphalt itself is good, it just needs to be restriped. Pretty simple stuff. The baskets at the middle school, you can see those contraptions there at the upper left. Again, those are nineteen sixty era mechanics, and we will get those replaced with.
Vintage.
Sure. I'll have you sent right over to your house. No, that, that, that will get done this summer, and again, that was another example of being able to do great things with a little help from our friends. The basketball clubs, they, they'd love to be behind this, and they contributed half. You know, so it's like, yep, you bet, we could do more, so, all good. Yep, there's the, the curtain, maybe have some holes in it, it doesn't, doesn't, doesn't show very well when we have a, a freshman game, we've got that thing down. So, that'll be nice to get that replaced. Custodial office, this is, this is the, was supposed to be a storage room, but we'll now have air conditioning in it, so love for my guys at high school. And then the aux gym lighting, same as the IC, the old fluorescent tube high bases. And if you go into any one of those gyms, you can see, you know, a dozen fixtures that are missing one bulb or something like that. Doesn't make sense to go up for one bulb, so we're, we're happy to, to put the UFO style lighting in there. The track and the faded paint, we'll get that done. Also upgrade, the exchange zone got lengthened from twenty-five meters to thirty meters, so we'll get that done as well. So, we're up to, up to snuff as far as what the requirements are, so we can have a conference track meet here or something like that, that'll be good. And the track, I walked the track, you know, last year, the, the, the track, we, we put some money into fixing cracks and stuff like that, and, you know, the thought was, well, what's it gonna look like next year? Are we gonna do the same thing? I walked the track this year, held up pretty well, so I'm, I'm, I'm pleased. It doesn't, it doesn't mean that the track's gonna be good forever, and that's, that's something we're gonna have to tackle somewhere down the road is, what, what do we do there? So, anyway, but a, a fresh coat of paint on there will certainly make it look nice.
Well, Dave, I think it goes without saying how much we appreciate your vision, your communication with others in order to help produce a package that's amenable to the community and to the board. Thank you.
You're welcome. I, I, I love my job, I really do, that's, I, I, I enjoy fixing all these things and, and making this, this look good, so, all for it.
You two, you guys work so well together.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Scott's there.
Thank you, thank you. Hi, so that was the end. So, moving on to our action items, summary is our second reading of policy three forty-seven, street records. We didn't have everybody the last time we went through this month, so this is the second reading. Do you, I mean, do you have, anybody have any questions for Sarah or any sort of revisions? I don't know if you need to go through it again unless somebody wants you to.
I can't remember who was not here, but maybe I was on my committee.
It was Adam. You have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Rod. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to seven B, our second reading, board policy six fifty-six, grants from public and private sources. Is Mr. DeYoung, anybody, questions, concerns, revisions? Anybody questions, concerns, revisions?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Rod, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 7C, consider school bus budgeted purchases for 2023, 2024 school year. Scott, this one's yours too.
Um, so we were fortunate at the board workshop, actually, um, back in early April, um, that the board, you all considered, um, as part of the budget, the opportunity to purchase two new buses next school year in our regular operating budget. Actually, I take that back, as part of our SRR budget, um, which is, don't get me wrong, SRR budget is part of our operating budget in my accounting mind, um, but it was through the SRR funds. This allows us, as a result of the, um, adoption of the budget for next year, to be able to bring forward to you the, um, two quotes for two new buses. We are happy to note that the, um, pricing that we received for the two SRR bus, buses from a couple of weeks ago, um, we also have that same pricing. Nothing's changed over the last couple of weeks, as you wouldn't think that would happen, but in this day and age, sometimes you just never know. So Brian Toth worked with his team at Nelson's, um, to ensure that our pricing would be the same. Um, and like I said, this is a, um, these two buses are budgeted as part of our operating budget for next year. Um, we budgeted $290,000, um, so we fit just under that mark. So again, same pricing, but of course over our $25,000 threshold, so it requires board consideration and approval.
Since we're buying four altogether, we don't think it's a discount.
Maybe free teacher?
Free teacher.
Buy first one, free one.
We'll keep trying.
And you get one free.
Right, what's the.
We get like Nelson points or something.
Yeah, like a little punch card.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Adam. Um, I have a question. So, uh, 50,000 mile warranty, what are, what are the average for our buses in a, in a year? Do you know, like, what?
Oh, I'd be remiss to, um.
Imagine some are different with the.
Yeah.
County routes and.
I would say in the, depends, yeah, because some buses, um, they heavily use for all of our athletic and co-curricular. Let me get back to you on that. An average mileage.
I just wonder, three years was going to be, you know, miss the mark or we actually.
No, I think that would be fair. We'll, we'll be in that ballpark for sure. And for three years, yeah. And we're fortunate, as we've talked about before, that our, our maintenance techs are able to do Thomas certified work, so that's fantastic for us.
Great. Okay, the motion by Leah, seconded by Adam. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to eight, citizens comments. All right, moving on to nine, future agenda items. Those are listed, as always, you can send those to Steve for addition to a future agenda.